So, welcome to the April Board Meeting for the AMSA Board of Trustees. We did have a late cancellation of our diversity training meeting, so that's... But our... This meeting is taking off on time. It's 6:49. And at the end of this meeting, we will be going into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate, and we'll not reconvene our meeting. So with that all being said, we're moving on to public comment. Is there anybody... Liz, has anybody contacted you for participation in public comment?
No, as of two minutes ago, I had not received anything.
Anybody online wishing to participate in public comment? Hearing none. We are moving on to the voting section of the meeting. In this section, we will be approving the board meeting minutes and also a minor update to the handbook. So first, any questions on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, taking motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second it.
Second from Liz?
Yeah.
Sarah, would you call the vote, please?
You're on mute.
Tell me. Whoops, Sarah's having technical difficulties.
Yep.
It's weird.
Roger, maybe you... Oh, there you go.
Oh, there we go.
I didn't want the typing. Okay, Ben?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Kristin Carney?
Yes.
Liz Saul?
Yes.
Maura Webster?
Yes.
Nicholas Poirier?
Yes.
Raul Porres?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
And Salmini?
Yes.
Now, the reason, I just remembered halfway in there that an open meeting law training, and we need to say the whole name, at least at the beginning.
All right. Thank you, sir. Handbook updates. I'd like to send it over to Sheila for a quick introduction on that.
Okay. I'm actually, if you don't mind, gonna hand it over to Ellen, because she is better voiced in the updates. Do you mind, Ellen?
No, I will discuss that here. So there are federal laws governing things like homelessness, military families, children in foster care, and families in fostering situations. And those programs are reviewed every six years. It is not something that is frequently happens at AMSA, but our six-year review is coming up this summer, and Kate Driver is doing that. I, once upon a time, was the McKinney-Vento liaison when I was working at Sizer School. And there's been new things that have been added that we weren't aware of, and that was a policy around foster children and around military children, military families. And so Kate went to a recent training where they were guided to a couple different sites to obtain copies of policies. And we need to... Those were reviewed by governance last week, and we're asking for a vote on those. They'll be added to our handbook and eventually to another handbook, actually, that we're putting together with a collection of all our policies in it. So that is basically what it is. It's a... They were... We contacted the Charter Schools Association. We received other policies that they had on file that other schools had used. And we also used some information from the School Committee Association, and they had some policies too that they used. And so, as I said, we adopted two of those. They're very basic, very compassionate policies to make sure that all of those children are taken care of and receive all the support that they need.
Thanks, Ellen. Any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll take a motion to approve the additions to the handbook.
Tell me.
Second from Maura. Sarah, would you call the roll, please?
After getting off mute.
Ben, yes. I can see the yes. Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Ro?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmina? Salmini? Tell me.
Sorry, yes.
Tell me. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously. That ends our voting section of the meeting. Like next to go to Ellen for her report.
Okay. It's that time already. That happened quick. All right. I'm going to share my screen. Post-disabled Mike Finkel, would you be able to allow me to do that and to be able to use my volume as well?
I'm trying now.
Yes, that's beautiful. Thank you.
We're 15 minutes early for the...
That is wonderful. Let me just move this here.
Must be the timekeeper.
I will just start by just mentioning, I know that we're all aware of the devastating effects of the COVID virus in India. And I do want to say that, you know, we have so many families from that area, students, our parents, and staff who have family members and loved ones in India. And so we want to send out our thoughts to all of those in our community who have family, loved ones there that I know that they're so worried about. And we want you to know that we're thinking about you and that we haven't forgotten about the devastating effects of this virus, even as AMSA seems to be coming back online. And so our thoughts are with all of you. Also want to acknowledge that we had a very personal loss as well at AMSA just prior to April vacation. And our love and our thoughts are with our family from our community who experienced a loss. So with that, I will just welcome you all out to our board meeting this evening and give you a quick little overview of some of the things that I will be talking about tonight. First, a little bit of gratitude. We've had a big couple of weeks at AMSA, a big few weeks. And this week, we have hit the ground running. So just a couple mentions there. And then a new day is dawning at AMSA. And I'm going to show you a little bit about what's been happening at the school this week. And I'm excited to see the students on campus and the way that we've set up some of the things that I think that you might find interesting. Also want to talk a little bit with you about the MCAS and the AP schedule. And not for any reason other than honestly, so that you can see the complexity of it and how they are going to take up a tremendous amount of time over the next several weeks, really right until the end of the school year. And because it's very... Well, you're going to see the impact. It's going to take time from learning, and it's impressive. And then we have a little bit of razzle-dazzle time. We've got some good news from the U.S. News &amp; World Report this week. And then just a quick, we have some upcoming events. They're mostly, I think they're all senior events. Just want to keep you up to date on those. All right. First of all, much gratitude to the back-to-school gang, in particular, Mike, Brianna, Anthony, Dan, Eric, Lynn McCleskey, Leanna, and Maureen Searle, and all the folks who work to help support them. This is a group of people who have been working very consistently, well, all year, honestly. But then we started meeting regularly back in January. And to get the school ready for whatever, you know, came ahead of us, and at the time, we really didn't know. These folks have put in hours and hours and hours of work to have that school ready. I can't... Once again, you know, AMSA has been reimagined, and we have a whole new program going on. And the detail of every single policy, of every single thing, of what Eric and Sean had to do with counting every chair in every room and labeling desks and things in the cafeteria and seating charts that the teachers have had to put together and for buses and seating charts for the cafeteria, the detail that we've had to do is really absolutely amazing what these folks have done. So I wanted to, big shout out to all of them. And obviously to our wonderful, amazing department chairs who help us to look at things from the academic side, communicating with their teachers, and they are a great support to us. And obviously, our fabulous teachers, our counselors, and our administrative staff, who have all just monumental effort that we have put in since we've certainly come back to school for this new program. But, you know, we all know, it's really been all year and, well, over a year now. Our students, I've had so many teachers mention to me this week how patient the kids have been and how willing to help with the technology when things have been a little sticky, because, you know, everything was kind of brand-new this week. And so just how great our students are and happy they are to be back on campus. And our wonderful families, we do love them and their support and how often they reach out to us. And I'm so grateful for all the work that every member of our community has given us. So I want to show you a little piece, perhaps you've seen this, Mike Finkel put this together. I hope that you'll be able to hear it. But if not, there's not a whole lot going on. You just hear the rustling of people. But you can see Mike Naraki over here, and that's Kate Driver. Not sure who that is. But just an idea of what happened the first day of our students being back. Oops. All right. So I hope you enjoyed that. When we were standing outside welcoming everyone back on campus, it was just, it was wonderful, right? We were waving, and everyone was waving back, and the parents were just literally glowing, you know, to be able to bring their kids back to school. And there was a feeling that the students were happy to be there as well. Maybe not quite so early as they were, but it was a wonderful day. That doesn't mean it was a perfect day, but it sure was a... Oh, sorry. Technical problem there, but it was a wonderful day. So just, you know, just to give you a little bit more detail about, let's see, about the program itself. The students have two mask breaks per day. They're about 15 minutes. They are able to kind of walk out there and talk. If they keep their masks on, they're a little bit closer. They take them off. They obviously separate more. We have adult supervision out there watching the kids, and they really have been great. The logistics of this has been, you know, really tough, how do you get everybody out there at the same time? And we go by eve in odd rooms and things like that. So this has been nice to see the kids out there. You can hear them out there talking and laughing. So this is, we have, we purchased three lunch tents and one nurse's tent. The nurse's tent is being used to triage students, do COVID testing. The students are allowed to have their masks off when they're sitting. They're six feet apart, and these guys are actually having lunch. These are some of our new sixth graders. And we're hoping for good weather. Having rain on day two was a little rough. This is the lower school. These are also sixth graders. So the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they have three different lunches. And they're spread between the lower school cafeteria, notice, once again, they're all six feet apart, and that outs, actually, all three outside tents, two outside tents, and the upper school cafeteria as well. The lunches are a half hour, a little longer than usual, but there's more traveling involved. The high school students are walking over to Four Kicks, and they are having lunch on the top floor, the second floor of Four Kicks. And you'll see a photo of that in a moment. These are the students. You see Mr. Naraki and Mr. Montesian here with... These are also sixth-grade students. These are the ones that have walked across to the upper school cafeteria. There's also more in a tent that's out behind the windows to the far right. These, the students have got to pick their seat the first day, and then those are their seats for the next seven weeks. We have to do seating charts for COVID tracing in case there's any contact tracing that we need to do. And this was the first day that they were all together. This is what it looks like up on the second floor of Four Kicks. And we are able to fit 88 students here. You can see there's just one seat at, these are six-foot tables. And they're running the whole length of that second floor. For those of you who have been up there, you know how big that is. It's really, really long. And the high school students go up there. They have the codes, the little black scanning codes that are, they're not in this photo, but they are... Oh, yeah, you can see one there. It says 152. That's the number. And you can see the little black scanning code. The kids, the high school students are able to take out their phone. They scan in. They put in their name, so they can change seats each day. But they scan in so that we know exactly which seat they were sitting in which day. And it's all tracked on a Google sheet. We are also using the same type of scanning codes for students as they come in or as they're being dismissed, so that they're not all crowding around the receptionist desks. So we want you to know that this is really, it's complicated, but we are ready to take this work on. We've spent many hours preparing. And I think all of the preparation work that we put in has really showed the success of it once the students actually came. The teachers were ready, although, as I said, bumpy. I'm sure Jess will talk a little bit more about that, because it was very complicated, what the work that they are trying to do. And, but we were ready logistically and operationally to make sure that the kids had everything that they needed to be as safe as we can. All right. I apologize for the little yellow highlights there. For some reason, I wasn't able to get rid of that. But I wanted to show you the MCAS dates and the AP dates. And so I called this MCAS, 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 and AP, oh my, because you can see on the one side, the May 17th and 18th. Now, we're talking about doing high school MCAS, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. ELA, on those dates, in their computer-based exams, we also, for the younger students, have to offer an at-home, remote exam that students will be doing on the computer, and Sarah went to some training on that today. On the 26th, we'll be doing eighth grade science. May 27th and 28th, we are doing 10th and 11th grade math. Now, the 11th graders are not required to take MCAS, but in order to qualify for the Abigail Adams Scholarship or the Copliss Scout Scholarship, they need to take it. And we had 26 students who opted to take it this spring, and there'll be more that will opt to take it in the fall, when we'll be running MCAS again. And June 7th and 8th will be biology, ninth grade biology, and that's going to be a paper test. So as you know, we have students that are in school and out of school. So it really makes it complicated when you're trying to schedule these things. And with the limitations that we have in the rooms and how many rooms we have, this has been a real puzzle for Sarah, and I thank her for all the time. I know she is spending sorting through all that. Now, Kate Driver is working through the AP. And you can see here that we have this primary test dates. And she worked with the AP teachers to determine which dates they wanted to test. But there's also a digital option test. So, you know, in some cases, that those tests are being administered twice. There's also makeup dates for students who can't do them, so that there are also makeup dates as well that are not included here. And you can see that these dates range all the way from May 3rd, which is this week coming up, to June 2nd. And these students that are in these AP classes range from 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So you'll see that there's an overlap between 10th and 11th graders taking MCAS and the dates they're taking MCAS, and then how complicated it takes, it is when you add in all the AP dates as well. The, one of the things that, when you look at something like this, you realize how much time some students will be missing from class. So every time you have a student who potentially is taking an AP Lit class, plus maybe they're taking Macro, and they're taking maybe APUSH, every test that they take, they miss class. They miss the day of school on the testing day. So it's going to be complicated for the teachers, probably exhausting for the children, and certainly a challenge when we're talking about proctors and locations and things. The AP exams will be administered at the Best Western in Marlboro, because we weren't going to use the second floor of Four Kicks. But now that it's being used for the cafeterias, we weren't able to do that. So just wanted you to kind of have an idea of what the kids are facing and the teachers are facing as far as the testing that's coming up this year. And once again, these are full-length exams, AP exams that these students are taking. They're full-length 10th and 11th grade MCAS. They're shortened 6th, 7th, and 8th grade MCAS. But the students, really, for having such an unusual school year, will certainly have an opportunity to be tested on what they have learned. And just a little bit of quick razzle-dazzle here tonight, as we're just starting to get rolling. Want to proudly announce that the U.S. News &amp; World Report has named AMSA as the number-three public school in Massachusetts out of 365 high schools. Now, we don't, you know, it's not all about rankings and ratings and scores, but we certainly are pleased with this one. We were number four last year, and so heading back towards number three again really felt good for us, especially with last year being such an unusual year. And also just noting that nationally, we rank 93 out of 17,857 public high schools and 21 out of 2,745 charter schools across the nation. And if you're interested a little bit more about how U.S. News ranks and what the category, they use six categories, which are listed on the bottom of that slide there, with college readiness, college curriculum, reading map proficiency. It's listed down there, graduation rate as well. So we're very pleased with that news last week. And just want to point out one more happy time that we were so excited. I had one of our special members of our community reach out to me and ask if he could wear that Eagle costume to welcome our kids back to school to make it a happy time, even though it was maybe an anxious time for very many, to make everyone smile, and the kids and the parents seemed absolutely delighted. Upcoming events. We have Senior Awards Night coming up. We're going to be holding that on Zoom on May 19th at 6:00 p.m. And that's the night that we do the, we, excuse me, we give out the Eagle Award and the Kia Kahaa Award, and also all of our academic awards. And you're welcome to come to that if you would like, if you're interested. I'd be happy to send you along the link. We're also going to be having a senior banquet slash prom. So it's a little bit different. There's a lot of regulations in place around prom this year, certainly around dancing and singing. But we are going to have it, it's going to be more of a banquet. And Mount Washington, Mountain has a really nice outdoor facility as well. And so the students will be out there. They'll be having a nice banquet dinner. It's going to be AMSA students only, so this is truly going to be a senior event. And we feel like we can, we have a better idea of who is there and their exposure to the virus, as most of our seniors are not vaccinated, although many of them are now. And that's going to be on May 14. The seniors' last day of school is May 27th. And so they literally are going to be in school about four weeks before their last day. And then they'll be graduating. This is going to be a Friday evening. It's on June 4th, outside of Four Kicks. We've got updated guidance this week that said that if it's outside, that we, the students can sit on chairs masked three feet apart and not six feet apart. We're going to be able to have a graduation with everyone together this year, where last year, we split the class in half, and the students were six feet apart. This year, they're a little bit closer, and their families will have, like a square box that they can sit in, and then we need to space the different families apart as well. The Four Kicks was wonderful, working with us last year, and we're looking forward to working with them again. And I know Brianna and Mike have been working with the student government and with other folks, the 12th-grade advisors organizing that as well. And so just, you know, once again, AMSA continues to soar. You know, here we are. And we have, we had, it feels like we have survived the pandemic so far, right? And hope that this positive trend continues. We're grateful, really, for all of your support during this time, this most difficult... I think Brianna Murphy mentioned 413 days, 413 days that we were apart, that we were teaching students under the most unusual circumstances, which continues to be the case. And the emotional toll that that has taken on our entire community. But we continue to thrive. And I remember last year saying and feeling so strongly that our community was going to grow as a result of this. And I do really believe in my whole being that that is the case. We've all grown in our knowledge of technology. I've watched people reach out and support each other. I've watched people reach out and support each other and take care of each other and watch out for each other, teach each other. And um, it's really, really been remarkable. How much uh, all of our adults care about our, our kids and want to make sure that they learn. And um, doing that under really difficult circumstances, so. Um, I thank everyone in our community for all they have done and all they will continue to do. And then we will get ready for the fall and we don't know yet what's ahead of us for the fall. Um, I was on a call with the commissioner this past week. And they really are giving us very little information because honestly, they don't know. They're going to wait to see how many folks are vaccinated um and how that works out. We, I saw something this week that talked about they hope to have the state fully open by August first. And you know, that would be, that would be great news. So continue to encourage our families to get vaccinated, our kids to get vaccinated as they can. And um, and get ready to come back to school full time with everybody in the fall. Any questions?
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Ellen. That school is back in session and. Thank you, thank you and everybody that supports you for making this happen.
Yeah, it was a lot of hard work, I'm sure, and it was uh, well paid off. I mean, I now can speak from a personal uh point of view and. Just the feedback over the last two days from my kids, but yeah, I think you guys did a great job and it's really amazing that um. It went as smooth as it did because it showed that you guys did a lot of really hard work and planning ahead of time and. And it did a great job, so thanks a lot.
Thank you. We have an absolutely amazing um administrative team, um, people who are really detail oriented and able to plan the logistics and. Um, I, I really, Brianna Murphy has been, I absolutely a superhero. She is absolutely amazing. Mike has been on paternity leave. Um, as you know, and so she has really, really stepped up and I, of course, I miss Mike, my, my buddy being um, being there with me, but she, she's just been great. And Anthony Montesian and Dan and and the crew, so. You know, and the teachers have spent their time doing what they needed to do, which was to prepare to teach our kids in the classroom, so we all did our jobs. And I think that that's um, that's paying off.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jess with the faculty rep report.
Hey, everyone. Um, so it's um, it's, it's been a busy week. It's been a busy week and. Because it's been such a busy week, I've had to kind of take my brain and think that the faculty port really needs to cover a month. But really, it's been such a busy two days. I don't even know if I can remember back more than, more than a day, but I'll do my best here. So um, I think as Ellen pointed out, this return to school has just encompassed every ounce of energy that the faculty has. Um, ha- has within them. Um, you know, uh. We just saw a little example of this and I'm not meaning to pick on anybody, anybody who's been on a Zoom meeting like we are and has tried to share their screen. And then it all sort of, it goes kablooey or you're on mute and uh, that, that is what we have been dealing with, of course, but we've been dealing with that all year. Now what we have is we need to um, get our Zoom meeting and share our screen with our Zoomers. And then I also need to figure out how to get that screen to be on my projector in my room to share. I call them my Zoomers and my Rumors. I don't know if that's going to stick. Uh, but to share with uh, so um. And then I need to talk to my uh, Rumors and then I need to not forget, I don't want to ignore my Zoomers. And then I've got a seating, I'm, I can't just have them come in and sit down because I've got to have a seating chart. Uh, and I um, I gotta take attendance and I have to mark who's here and who's here remotely and who's. It's a lot to juggle. The first five minutes of a class are absolutely uh, it's just uh, chaos. Um, that is getting better, even just the second day, I already felt it better. Um, but I know that teachers were just um, sort of um. Flummoxed a little bit with uh, juggling all of these things. Uh, today for me, I had a PowerPoint that I absolutely could not get to display the way I wanted to. I, I have to shout out to the I T team. When you call them, they come and they help you. They've been so wonderful. Um, dealing with teachers, sometimes when you deal with I T staff, they just, they act as if you are just too dumb to even live. And our I T people are not like that at all. They totally understand how, how frustrating this is and that we're not trained in it, so they. Have been helping us set up. Now I've gone from having just one laptop to having one laptop and one second monitor. To having a laptop and a second monitor and a projector and a microphone and a speaker for my classroom and a dongle and a. Charging cord and then as soon as I get it all set up, you know, we don't. Um, one of the things that people might not realize is AMSA teachers all share classrooms. And so as soon as you get it set up and you're like, oh, I think I finally have it working. I have to unplug all these bits and I got to go do the same thing two doors down or in another building and plug all those dongles and cords and. It's, it's, it's a lot to juggle for somebody who's uh, uh, my, my job is really just talking to people, so. Um, it really has been a lot of uh, of that. Uh, today I witnessed somebody had on their screen that their cursor, like when you're trying to go between all of the things, have you all experienced this where you lose your cursor? Yeah, we've all lost our cursors zigzagging all around. Somebody had turned their cursor into a giant. Highlighter, yellow thing and all of us were like jumping on this like, what? How did you do that? And so that was like a little tip that already one of my classes went better. Because I figured out how to make my cursor bigger. These are the little things that we're sharing amongst ourselves and are going to. Turn the, it's, it's this, we're, we're going up from here, we're going up from here and um. So uh, that's all really, really important that um. I think also another thing that's worth noting, Ellen highlight, kind of hinted at this, that we're coming back after a week's vacation. And as soon as we get back and we're just, we're having a first day of school at the same time that we. Uh, have known these kids kind of all year long and then we just jump right back in. Um, I had two classes with my AP Gov kids and our exam is on Monday. So uh, it was like a first day of school and I learned their names because all year long I've really only seen their sailing fan in their forehead. So now I matched a face to that and now we have an exam. So it's just so quick to kind of put all of these um pieces in order. All, and and we have to do it like with masks and with one way hallway patterns and with smearing a lot of Goop on ourselves and. Uh, it's just, it's a lot, but all of that said. I just can't express how much joy it was to be back and. Um, not, oh, I don't want to get out, I don't want to get, I don't want to get verklempt. Um, but just seeing students giggling and talking and um, I asked a class a question. And what has been for four hundred and thirteen days, I've asked a class a question and a black box stared back at me and maybe after. Thirty seconds of me giving the stare, I might get an answer. Instead, somebody just answered me like instantly. It was just joyous and. The normal is joyous. I think that that's what's really so wonderful is just remembering how. What we do normally and just being, students being with each other and teachers being with students and being with our colleagues. Um, just appreciating what was once normal that now is special is just, it's worth all of the. All of the nonsense that I spent the first five minutes talking about. Um, it, it was, it's just really been wonderful just to see kids laugh with each other. Just to tell a joke in a class and somebody laughs back like that, that's really all I was in it for all along. Um, I think also seeing students really appreciate things, if I could just say broadly and forgive my language a bit. I think one of the problems with education in general is just an attitude among students that, oh, this school, school sucks. And we don't really have that at AMSA, but we have a little bit of it. But when you have these kids back and you can tell, you can tell that they are. They don't have that attitude anymore because they really appreciate that was taken from them and to have it given back to them. Uh, they'll never take for granted again, just going to school on a, just, just going to school, right? Uh, uh, something that they had thought was a chore and a burden and now they have given back to them and it's, it's such a gift. Um, and I, that's probably sounds kind of hokey, but it, it really has been a lovely two days. And even seeing the kids in the uniforms, I was like, oh, look at the uniforms. Um, it's, it's, it's really, really been nice to be reminded of why, why this is a job that I love, I guess is, is a good way to put it. Um, I know that teachers are dealing with all of that at once. Um, and and that it is a lot. Um, I would be. I'm just trying to look at my list of things that I wanted to mention. Um, I, I would be remiss if I did not bring up a point as, as a teacher reached out to me through our anonymous feedback form. Um, in the midst of all of that, we also, as, as, as Ellen said, had a tragedy. Um, and so that sort of colored our return back to in-person learning. Um, and um. The, because of that event, uh, teachers were given instructions about how to. Um, how to handle class this week and um, some teachers found that a little bit limiting, so I just want to read to you some feedback that I got. And so I'm just going to read it. Um, I was frustrated in our week returning to in-person learning. I was told I had to put breaks on my teaching. Um, uh, it was certainly a tragedy, but the education of our, of our students must be paramount. Um, to AMSA as an institution. The broadly applied policy did not allow teachers to use their professional judgment to determine the best needs of their students. At a time when we needed maximum flexibility, we received the opposite. It demonstrated that our administration does not always prioritize excellence in education that they should be committed to. And it is cynical beyond belief to use a student tragedy as a reason to stop the education of our students. So I did want to pass that on. I think that um, there was some, and maybe Ellen can respond to that, um, because there was sort of um. This email that we got as teachers that we got kind of last minute that said, don't teach new material, you know, we have to be sensitive. And I, I think teachers really do understand that, but I think for some teachers. At a time when we knew AP was around the corner and we know that our minutes are limited and we know that we have this schedule where. We only see our students a few days a week, it felt for some teachers that, that um. That policy to not teach new material, um, it, it didn't hit them right. So that, that's, that's what I have there. That's all I have.
Any questions for Jess? All right, thank you, Jess, for your report and providing feedback from our faculty. Next up, we have Maura.
Thank you, Roger. Um, so I'm going to go with some emails that I got earlier um, in the month and then some feedback on the past couple of days. Um, so the only emails I got, I did get a couple of emails from parents concerned about music department funding. Um, and so what I just want to bring to the board for future discussion, and I know we have some commentary time set aside at the end here. Um, more specifically concerned about the jazz band and sort of what the future plans are for AMSA because um. Jazz band parents have seen funding and opportunity decline and obviously this year has looked different. Um, as well, but um. Curious about what the future plans are because of the importance of music, not just chorus, but also instrumental music as well. Um, you know, I can speak to the benefits of music as being a kid who grew up with music and that opportunity really helped me in every other aspect of my education. Um. But so just want to bring that to the board's attention that there are um, concerns and questions about what our plans are moving forward. So I don't know if there's anything we can share during the comments section, if not, take it back to finance committee and and kind of see what's going forward there. Um, so that's from the email segment um, of my communication and then just some feedback. From a parent perspective, as well as what I've heard from some other parents. Um, I know mine are not the only ones, but there was some relief yesterday after the first day. When some kids were like, oh, my God, I absorbed more in math class today than I have in months. Um, and I, I was joking before the board meeting that if I had to sit through a hundred and forty minutes of math, I would have gone AWOL in that fifteen minute break period. Um, but I was really happy just to sort of hear that sense of relief of a lot of the stress that they've been feeling that I've been observing and that some of. My fellow parents have been observing was, there was a big sigh yesterday when the kids came home, which was great. Um, and just to, to share a little bit, um. Jess, what you had said uh, from the faculty perspective, I also received um, feedback from the student perspective. Um, about noticing and being extremely appreciative of the ease. This week coming back to school in light of um, the tragedy. And um, the parents have really bonded together, students have really bonded together and. And there was a deep sense of appreciation from these kids who have been busting their humps, just like the faculty have no. No disrespect there, um, but just for it to be silently acknowledged and in that way of not being bombarded. With a ton of new work with all this other adjustment that's going on and still processing something that's going to take a lot of them a long time to process, I think. Um, was so deeply appreciated and for a teenager to come out and say that and acknowledge it and be like, I'm so grateful. That it seems like they understand was just, I, it, it was moving for me as a mom. Um, and so I just wanted to share that because I think it is, it's noticed, it's appreciated. Um. And like I said, these kids, there's this new sense of motivation and exhaustion. Everyone is tired and going to bed at reasonable hours, which is delightful. We did eat like the blue plate special hour tonight, like no joke, because everyone was hungry and tired. So that's all I've got.
Okay, questions for Maura?
Hey, Maura, I just sent you a, a note in the text, but if you can send me along the music information, because we are um. That is on our agenda for the May Education Committee meeting, so um. Brianna had, had brought that up a couple of weeks ago.
Great, I was told those you. Just for context, as the chorus teacher, we did not run chorus this year because of um, of the COVID year. It is back on the plan for next year. I don't have a lot of connection with the jazz band, but um, I. I, I, I have felt the lack of music this year as well as of, of the many lack, of the many um. You know, missing holes in our, our year that COVID was, music has definitely been um, high on my personal list, so. Um, yeah, if, if there's anything I can do to help um, with jazz band or, or any music department stuff, please hit me up.
Great, thank you.
So checking for board discussion items after, after the, at this point. We possibly have a jazz band discussion. But that sounds, it already sounds like that may be. Uh, possibly being resolved by going to uh, ed- yeah, going, moving toward the Education Committee. So. Is that, does anyone feel that we need to discuss further at this point or? That between administration and the Education Committee that we've got it covered for now?
I can just add that, that, you know, these regulations didn't allow for blowing into horns and things this year. Um, our band director uh, offered to run kind of a remote lessons and things like that. Um, from, you know, remotely through Zoom, which he has, he has done. Band's always been a club for us, so it's run like a club. Um, and. The ki- the kids did a great job. I listened to their, their performance. There's only thirteen students involved. Um, so it's a very small program and and um, and I, I think over the years. There's been a couple of things that have happened with AMSA is that as our sports program has expanded, the number of clubs that have expanded. Um, has taken, uh, I think some, some, put some pressure on the jazz band. And we don't, uh, we don't have the numbers that we, that we used to have and and certainly want to improve that. I was a flute player myself, I, I admit it. I have about, I don't know, ten years of flute, believe it or not, under my, under my elementary, junior high and high school belt. Um, but um. You know, where it's going as, as we move ahead, Leanna and I have been talking about that all week as well.
Would it, would it, Ellen, would it make sense that you could give us a brief update in the next, in the next month's board meeting?
Um, it, it, there's some personnel things involved and contracts and things, so. Sometime when we're talking, I'd be happy to update whoever would like to be updated.
Okay. All right. Anything else for discussion? Hearing nothing else, on to chair business. For chair business, I only have uh, two things. First, I'd like to again extend the thank you to Ellen and her staff. Yeah, Ellen, you made a, you thanked everybody else, but I think you, you are our leader and are making this all happen. So thank, thank you again for getting our school open successfully. So thank, thank you again for getting our school open successfully. Uh, second, my, my second action was actually going to Raul to talk briefly about the Survey Task Force.
Yes, it's a quick update. And if you didn't have a chance to read the written report, it's because I've submitted it at five o'clock today. So you probably didn't make enough time. Um, but the survey task force met, um, if you remember the timeline that we had discussed in the past and we try to stick to, we were supposed to have the spring survey open right after the April break. And we, we met to discuss whether or not that was good timing. And after some discussion, we concluded and agreed that it was better to, to push it off. So the new survey window is going to be from May thirteenth through the twenty-first. So we're, we're giving a little um, over a week uh, for the, for the survey to be open. And again, this is the both staff and family surveys that we typically do in the spring. And part of the discussion was, well, there's been a lot of surveys recently. And also the, the back to school, you know, getting back to school is going to affect the response rates and, and, and also the answers that we get. So we wanted to make sure that the feedback that we get included, feedback about getting back to school. And it didn't make sense to do that right after everybody was just getting back to school. So, you know, considering all that, we decided to move the dates. Um, now we do, we don't want to delay the sharing the feedback and sharing the results. So what we said is that, you know, what takes a lot of time after we close the survey is going through the comments. So what we agreed is that on the main twenty-seventh meeting, board meeting, which is our next board meeting, we will be sharing the quantitative results, basically just the numbers and, and the results of the, how people answer the questions. And then that allows us to share that on the website after that board meeting. And then the task force will review the comments. And then on the fall in board meeting, uh, in the, the June twenty-fourth board meeting, we would be sharing our observations from those comments. So that, that kind of pushes off our original timeline, but we thought it was worth it. And, and just a general comment, because, you know, we talked about, oh, there's been a lot of surveys. The staff has conducted surveys for students, for teachers, for families. And, you know, it's, it's another survey. We don't want people to be surveyed out. And although we're cognizant and aware and acknowledge that issue, we also want to highlight that this is the only one that's a board-run and board-owned survey. And historically, it was, it was established as a way to continue to have that, that perception of the board um, being driven by something. And I think I made this comment in the past, um, as of yet, I haven't been a parent of the school. And the, the surveys have become my way as a board member to understand what's going on, to get an idea of the climate and how well we're accomplishing our mission. So we did want to acknowledge the importance of this survey differently than, than all the other ones. So we didn't just want to skip it, uh, but we agreed on, on the new timeline. Uh, so that's the update. Any questions on that? Anybody else from the task force? Uh, anything that I missed? All right. So hopefully I stay on time on that, Roger. Back to you.
All right. Thank you, Raul. Uh, that's it for Chair Business. So Kristin, you ready for Finance Committee report?
Uh, yes, Roger.
Laura's yours.
Uh, we met this week on Tuesday. Uh, we had a preliminary budget review meeting. Um, Leanna's been spending, Leanna and Ellen and team have been spending all their time on the budget. So um, I don't have any financial monthly results this uh, this, this meeting, but we'll have them next time. Um, and then uh, there are a few revisions to make to the budget. We had extended the date to May to review the budget as a board. And I think we're going to be on track for that. There's a couple of things that the team is working on. And then we'll uh, we're going to meet again once or twice in the month, uh, in order to try to have that ready for May. So it's a very short report from our perspective, but the budget is looking great, in great shape this year or next year. That's all I have, Roger, unless you want to add something to that from the meeting.
No, nothing to add. Questions for Kristin? No questions. Ben, Development Committee?
So we did meet this, uh, this month. We had, uh, continuing with our um, interest in reaching out and making connections with other groups within the AMSA community, uh, helping to support the school. Uh, we had Rebecca Doherty, the incoming president for PTA. Or uh, yeah, it's PTO, right? Sorry, PTO. I, my, when I grew up, it was PTA, so my brain, like, it's always PTA, but PTO, uh, so it was great. Uh, Rebecca was able to join. Um, we kind of explained what we thought from a board dev committee point of view of what we could do to collaborate and, and just talk through and meet each other, just so we have a name and a face. Uh, we did uh, talk about in the future reconnecting and, and aligning some of the calendars and schedules and the events that are going on to uh, to make sure that we're all collaborative together and we're not um, hitting community from too many angles and confusing uh, the folks to help support our, our great organization, our great school. Uh, so I thought that was a good meeting. And, and so as Rebecca gets on board and she starts to put her meetings, um, we'll reconnect and have an ongoing conversation. Uh, the second thing I think, Roger, you asked uh, in an email, and I, I went and got the numbers. Um, we actually have a good update for the uh, ANSA annual campaign, campaign. So that runs usually uh, July to uh, end of June. Uh, as of right now, we're uh, above our goal. So we're at about twenty-one thousand dollars for the year, uh, which is pretty good, given the um, the pandemic year that we're at and everything that's been going on in terms of not being able to really engage with the community through uh, our traditional methods. So I appreciate everyone that's, that's gone and done, undone that. And I think the third order, uh, I think was important from our meeting, this one, was that we decided as a committee that it's time to engage with an external consultant again uh, in terms of a more broader, uh, deeper um, uh, uh, funding campaign. So what we're going to do uh, as an organization is uh, um, reach out to, uh, Ellen's actually going to reach out to some of the other folks and get some names and, and some contacts. Um, and then we're going to do an interview process for an engagement from the school point of view so that we can uh, really bolster and uh, expand our, our reach. Uh, now that we have some good news about um, the new buildings and things like that, we have uh, some good momentum. We want to capitalize on that and, and take advantage of um, uh, ways to raise more money and, and make our, our transition uh, even more uh, smoother, but also uh, give us a longer-term uh, um, connection with the community to help us out as well. So uh, those are the updates from the Dev Committee for this month.
Thanks, Ben. Any questions for Ben? Would like to uh, you know, first, first, thank, thank our, our community for exceeding our, our fundraise, our annual fundraising goals for the year. Also encourage that our board members all have, make a donation to the annual campaign. And as well as the community, our whole community as, as a, as a whole, if, if possible, within your means, if you can make a donation to the annual campaign. One of the things that donors look at is percent participation of our community in our annual giving campaign when they consider making a gift or, or grant to AMSA. So, you know, please, please keep us, please keep AMSA in your thoughts and help us out where you can. Uh, with that, I will move on. Education did not meet this week, so it will be skipping over the Education Committee and on to Governance.
Hi, so we did meet last week. Um, we continue to work on um, uh, the diversity stuff that Raul is working on. And we spoke about and continue to speak and develop um, both meeting effectiveness um, plans as well as kind of post our strategic, um, my God, I just lost my word, our offsite from January with Samini. Um, uh, and continue to work on that as well. So I will be reaching out to the other um, committee chairs, just on some of the meeting effectiveness stuff that I need some info on. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. I don't, I hope that covered everything.
Questions for Sheila? All right. See, no questions. Uh, next up, we had um, discussion for flagged items. We've had none of that. We're into the meeting wrap-up phase. Reviewing uh, action items from the previous board meeting. The one action they had listed is still for committee, I have not checked, but encourage committee chairs to put your, your goals into the board on track. And meeting, speaking of meeting effectiveness, uh, any feedback on tonight's meeting? Anything we wish to, continue doing the same, do better, or stop doing?
I think we're flying through it. They didn't even give me a chance to cut anybody off.
So Raul's doing a great job as timekeeper. I, I do think, well, again, we're, for meeting effectiveness, we're looking at July, in the July meeting, starting the consent agenda. We'll be talking more about that. Also, if people have uh, written reports that they wish to submit, um, encourage us to start to pilot that. If you have something that would be better submitted as written, that people can read ahead of time, I'd encourage you to do that. If you wish to submit a written report, reach out to myself and Sarah and we can make it part of the board packet. Other discussion questions, comments? Hearing none. Um, collecting candidate agenda items for May. We have carrying forward, we have uh, the budget for, budget for next fiscal year. We have conducting the surveys that'll occur during that timeframe. It's not actually, it's more of a activity going on in the background and.
We do, so I'm sorry, Roger, but um, according to what I just shared, we will be sharing the quantitative results.
Okay. Well, Sarah, you've, you've got that one?
Yeah, I don't know how much time we need for that. Make it ten minutes or fifteen.
Assume ten minutes. And again, this, this may be something that would fit nicely as partially as a written report.
Sure.
Up to you. Uh, just throwing out there as an idea. Um, and we may have the uh, parent and faculty nominations for the Board of Trustees occurring in the May meeting, in the May meeting. The, the faculty one may be going out till June. So that's, that's.
The election is actually on May fifth.
Well, there's, that, that possibly may be from uh, email conversation that may be postponed because we're working on definitions. You can re, reach out.
Ah, yes.
So. So uh, other candidate agenda items for May beyond our standard ones.
I think we have the board self-assessment on the May agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
And how much time would you need for that, Jill?
Well, that lends itself maybe towards a written report also. So let's say ten minutes, but it could be less.
Yeah, well, I think there'll be some discussion, so I would, I think ten minutes is probably the minimum, even if, even with a written report. So we'll start there.
Sounds good. Fifteen then, just in case.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jill. Uh, so are ready, ready for summary of action items for things that came up in the meeting? Sarah, do we have any action items?
I did not, I did not note any.
I do not recall any other, any myself. Any board members identify action items? All right. Final, we are ready to go into, we're ready to close the meeting. So we're, at this point, I'm going to make him look, call for going to uh, go into, motion to go into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate as discussion in open meeting would be, would, would not be productive toward our position. Note, this will probably likely be one of the last, I hope, meetings that, where we will have to go into executive session for most of the uh, facilities acquisition work. So that being said, uh, look, look for motion to go to executive session and not reconvene. Oh, and inviting Ellen, who will, um, Bob Baldwin, who else?
Bob is not coming. Um, just Leanna and me, I think we're the only ones here tonight.
Okay, so uh, guests will be Ellen and Leanna. And with that, long-winded, I'm trying to look for a motion to entry, enter into executive session at the close of this meeting.
So.
My second.
What's second?
Uh, give it to Ben.
So it was Raul and Ben?
Yes, Raul and Ben.
Okay. And we'll record that. Okay, so Ben?
Uh, yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Wait, that's everyone.
And finally, we need a, um, executive session will start at eight oh five.